On time I came here, I remember it being built there.
Good afternoon and welcome to the August meeting of the City of Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. We do have a quorum today, so I call this meeting to order. Each of you should have received a set of minutes from the last meeting of July 16th. Are there any revisions, additions, or other comments?
It looked in order to me. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, the chair would welcome a vote of aye for those to approve it. Aye? Any opposed? They are approved. I'd like to introduce today our new, the guy who's responsible for keeping us in line along with Brenda, and that is Donald Anthony. He's the Director of Planning and Community Development. Donald, if you'd like to say a few words, we welcome you to our board.
Thank you very much. As most of you know, I think Diana Tomlin, her last month was with us was last month, and she has moved on to serve another city. So if you don't mind, I will sit in with you for the next few months until we find a replacement for her, and I'm looking forward to it, and thank you very much.
Great. Donald, if you would then bring us forward our first bit of business.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is located at 930 East Main Street, which is at the corner, southwest corner of East Main and First Avenue. The house on this property was constructed in 1999, and it does appear that considerable effort was made to have the structure fit within the historic context of East Main Street. The front of the house features a semicircular wooden balustrade. The applicant has provided an image of the balustrade, which shows some deterioration on both the railing as well as the individual balusters. The applicant wishes to replace the entire structure using a composite material, specifically a fiberglass resin. The packet includes several images of structures that have used this material. I'll pull a few of those up. These images are from Chadsworth, which is the manufacturer and distributor of this material. The applicant has submitted a material sample, which I'm going to pass around for you to look at. In determining the appropriateness of the proposed alteration and the proposed material, the commission may consider sections C6 and C7 of the Historic Commission Guidelines. These sections do suggest that building materials should either be consistent with the original materials or should closely approximate the original materials. Mike Chavis from Mullins Watson Builders is here on behalf of the property owner, Mr. Thornberry, and can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
If you would like to go to the podium, then state your name and your address.
My name is Mike Chavis. My address?
Your address.
Sir?
Your address.
Yes, it's 1562 Span Hill Road.
If you could describe the project to the commission here, and then we will ask you questions.
So Mr. Thornberry approached us about doing some repair to the semicircular balustrade that sits atop the portico entry of his home at 930 East Main. We went through a couple of material choices to use to replace, because when we went up and inspected it, we realized that it was rotted beyond repair in several areas. And the material that we landed on was this fiberglass resin marble dust composite that is very durable, extremely timeworthy, and would match the exact look of what he's got currently on the top of that curved portico. And what we would like to do is remove what is there and replace it with the product, the balustrade product from Chadsworth.
What questions does the commission have of the applicant? I have a few. What is the material being replaced? What is it made out of?
Redwood.
And what other materials did you investigate?
We looked at arcastone, but we didn't feel like that fit. And then we looked at a different composite that was, in my opinion, less durable. It was kind of like the Fippon type material, except it was a little bit harder than that.
Did you investigate putting it back with real wood?
Mr. Thornberry asked if we didn't put it back with real wood, that we use something that's a little more weather resistant.
Can we get the picture of the porch back up? It described to the commission, just so we all know what we're voting on. We see the columns, you see the sort of beam at the top of that, and then you see the balustrade and some plinth, some boxes between the railing dies into.
Correct.
Can you describe all of which that's going to be replaced?
Okay. What will be replaced is everything. If you can see, there's a copper lip that is above the breastwork of the portico. What we're proposing to replace is the square columns and put them in the same exact places where they are. The bottom and top railing of the balustrade, and we are going to re-roof that covered portico.
If you exclude the discussion about the roof, so anything above the roof is being replaced?
That is correct. Just on that semicircular portico, yes, sir.
Did you all, I mean, he asked that you not look into real wood, but see, I'm an architect and do preservation in something like this. Failure on wood materials like that typically is because, and you can see in the photographs, that the bottom of the turned balusters are rotting there at that point where they meet the rail.
Yes, sir.
And more than likely, have you taken any of it apart?
We have taken one of the balusters out, because we would like to send those to Chadsworth so they can duplicate them exactly. But other than that, no, sir, we haven't taken any.
Did you find the underside of that baluster primed or painted?
No, that was not. So, and...
And that's where the problem starts, is that it's the end grain soaking the water up, and it starts rotting from there. And had that been primed originally, it'd still be in really good shape, most likely.
Could be, yes.
And that's where, in my profession, I use like mahogany or Spanish cedar or cypress, and then I prime all sides. Anything getting painted on the outside, I prime all surfaces, even the cuts.
That is a practice of ours as well.
And so if you had done it originally, it'd probably still be there?
I can't say for sure.
Well, I can't either, but...
But I would imagine it still would be there, yes.
In much better shape.
Yes.
So really, it comes down to this commission reviewing and accepting, if at all possible, using a composite material that's a man-made material, and instead of going back and replacing it with wood in kind, doesn't have the same species, but that it would be wood and painted. Is the, the square columns to the balustrade, are they going to be hollow? Are they framed with pressure-treated wood, and there's a veneer put on it? Can you explain that?
So the square columns, those, as I understand it, from the lady at Chadsworth I've been talking to is Rosemary Saylor. So from what I understand from her, they do have a hollow core, but they're pretty beefy on the outside. So there wouldn't be any wood involved.
So it's sort of an upside-down square shoebox. It's a shell?
It is a shell, but the side walls are, I don't know exactly how thick, but I believe they're about an inch thick.
But if you were, when you receive it, it's going to be one piece, that you're going to turn it upside down?
It is going to be one piece, yes.
So it's hollow?
Yes.
I have a question about the weight.
Yes.
These little samples pretty heavy.
It is pretty heavy, and we are going to determine the structural viability of that semicircular area where they're going to sit when we take off. What is currently on there is EPDM, and we're going to replace it with a gray TPO, a 60-mill TPO. But they will, they will be sitting directly above the columns below, as they are pictured.
As they should. What other questions does the commission have?
I don't have a question, but is one of the drivers that the Thornberrys are wanting to go to this synthetic is because of the wood today versus 100 years ago, it's not as hard? I mean...
I think the main driver for Mr. Thornberry is the ease in maintenance. This is something that he can have up there, and a good coat of Benjamin Moore aura on the outside would last a good long time, and that material is not going to rot, nor is it going to be affected by wood-boring insects.
What other questions do we have?
I don't know that I necessarily have a question, but I do want to comment on this material. I know we are not a fan of putting vinyl back in places, but you know, in the case of windows, composite wood is typically acceptable. This, and this is not necessarily just a vinyl composite. This has a stone quality to it.
It is composed of fiberglass resin and marble dust.
So it's more of a rock than it is a piece of vinyl?
Their term for it from Chadsworth is a polystone.
One thing I'm challenged by in this particular case is this is a 20-year-old house. It's technically non-contributing structure on East Main Street, and I feel that this material is fairly attractive.
Is the baluster going to fit up in this groove?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And is there a filler or closure strip between the balusters that, or will it be hollow like this between the two balusters?
On the bottom, there, I know that there's going to be, but that would be the top rail.
Yeah.
And I'm not 100% sure if there is a filler for that. I can...
So if we look up, it's not going to look like the photograph. You're going to see this groove?
We'll order the material in such a way that we'll have the fillers.
You will have a filler?
Yes. Yeah, I recognize your point.
Any further discussion?
Our intention is to replace it exactly like it is right now.
If no further discussion, the chair would welcome a motion.
I make a motion that we approve as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I believe the motion then carries. Is that correct? So it's accepted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What is our next bit of business, Donald?
I do not have any other new business. I see that we have some folks in attendance. Do you have a previous case that you wanted to talk about today?
Come up to a podium if you would and state your name and your address.
My name is Mark Green, 2452 Laredo Court, Christiana, Tennessee. We arranged this meeting with Diane prior to her leaving, so that got lost in communication somewhere, so I apologize for that. But it's good to see you all.
What would you like to present to us?
I'm here with Final Phase Construction, representing Ms. Linda Parks, who's currently present with us, and she has some columns at her home off of Main Street that have rotted and are in dire need of replacing. So we're here to, in hopes of getting that approved. And I've got some pictures, because I don't think that that's going to be available for you to see. We sent all that to Diane, but I don't think it made it to you.
If you want to bring those pictures before the commission, we'll send them around, and do you have any samples?
I do have samples as well.
Okay. You have two, same copies?
Would the committee like to see samples of the current post and a sample of what we're recommending to be replaced as well?
If our communication folks can bring up the images, I did pull up the agenda from last month, which has some images in it.
Yeah, yeah. I think we have actually some new images that we didn't see last time. One of the top of the Capitol, for instance, and the...
Okay, we know the wood is, that's the base. This is part of the, it's going to be plaster work?
Same stuff.
So basically, what you guys are looking at are, it's a polystone composite material, which is actually lighter than wood, but it's more durable. It's a fiberglass with marble dust matrix in it, and it actually is load-bearing, which is stronger than the wood. And the company that we're looking at doing this is a local company that I've used in the past, Sledgecraft, I believe, and kind of giving back to the local business in our area. They're phenomenal. This is what they do, and they enter all this into a computer, and it's an exact duplicate of what's there. It's kind of like a 3D printer. They take pictures of it, laser measure, cut it, and then it's entered into a computer, and they make the exact piece, which is a little easier to do than wood. Wood has to be hand carved, which takes a lot more time than using wood materials, and environmentally, you know, this is certainly a better option as well. I'd love to answer any questions you guys may have.
Are all of the columns in this condition?
No. There is 12 full columns and two half columns. Only three have to be replaced. The other columns look pretty good. The hopes, if we get approved for the polystone composite material, would be to replace them all. If we have to go to the wood option, we would only replace the three. And then the other ones would have to be scraped, resealed, and then painted.
And Sledgecraft feels they can make identical replicas of...
They can make an identical replicate, and they've done this for me in the past. And I've got, obviously, I've got some pictures of some samples of stuff that they've done as well, and they're local here, about two miles away.
Want to bring those forward, too? I assume the current, I'm going to go ahead, if there are not any other questions right now. I assume that the existing columns are structural?
They are structural.
And will the new replacements be structural?
They will be structural, and the composite material that you're seeing there is actually stronger than wood.
So to match what's there, I assume they have to sort of laser scan them?
They do, and there's a, we actually will take one down and take that to them, and then they will duplicate that to the exact...
And I could see where the base would be easy to do, and I don't, I really can't tell that there's any entasis. Well, maybe there is a little bit of entasis in the columns, and that's just where they taper and get, as they get to the top.
Correct.
How are they going to scan, and will they scan in the plaster Capitol?
I'm not sure. The Capitol will be custom-made. They do that at their facility locally. I've never done a tour of their facility, so I'm not quite sure how they will do that. I know that they've done it and done it for us in the past. The base, which you can see in the photo, is actually concrete, and that will help structurally with the column sitting on that. That's actually not a composite or a wood, that square piece at the bottom.
You're speaking of this?
That is a concrete piece.
You're not speaking of this. You're speaking of this.
Correct. That piece will stay. The column actually is what they're going to make, and it'll go on top of that.
And this base here below the shaft will be that same material?
It's all the same material.
Is it part of this, or is it separate and just...
It's all one piece.
It's one piece. Is the Capitol...
Capitol is one piece. It's all made as one piece, and that's why it's load-bearing, and that's why it's stronger than wood. And this material can be painted to any color. Most of your vinyl and other composite materials cannot be. So we can duplicate exactly what's there.
Once it's scanned, then, and if she decides to do other columns as they get deteriorated, they'll have that on file, and they can just run another couple?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, you guys have been in the business long enough that it gets pricey. If you set a form and you do it one time, it's cheaper to do all of them than have to come back and do it again later. And the other columns, at some point, will need to be replaced, and it would be a lot cheaper to do it at the front end than having to come back. You know, it's going to preserve the look and the history and the character of the home for decades to come.
When was the house built, and when were those columns installed?
That's a good question, Linda.
And are they the original columns?
They are original.
What kind of wood is it? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, it's just, there's plaster around it, and the wood is just, it looks like it's untreated wood. It doesn't look like it's treated at all. It's just hollow. One of the pictures has a picture of the wood. It's a column that's laying down. It's just old-school, handcrafted probably back in the day. They hand carved it and did it on-site, I'm sure.
And so the finish of the columns is plaster?
It's like a plastostucco-type material. It's almost like they caulked it somehow and then painted it, because you can, that pedestal piece right there to your right, you can start to peel that away. It's almost like a rubbery material.
Yeah.
And that's what they wrap the wood with. And obviously, there's so much maintenance that's involved in trying to care for something like that. It's almost virtually impossible to protect the wood.
How much maintenance has been done on it in the last 120 years?
I think every few years, she has it caulked and painted.
Yeah.
But it's, obviously, it's never going to hold up to the weather.
It's held up for 120 years.
It's held up pretty good.
That's not bad.
It's not bad. And this, and most of this damage here recently has been caused from a roof leak that happened that was undetected in the roof, yeah, so.
So this house is part of the Main Street Historic District and is considered to be a contributing structure in the district, I think?
It is.
Mr. Chairman, what's the difference between this material and material that the Thornberrys are using? They're pretty similar?
I don't know the, I intentionally stayed out of chemistry in high school and college, and so I...
As did I.
My dad had a PhD in organic chemistry, and I knew I would never be that good. I don't know the composition. I know that this is a composite material that is, like you said, with ground sawdust with it in there. And I don't know about this. This seems to be more of a polymer, but I don't really know.
It is, and there's a description on one of the sheets I gave you of how it's made, what the materials are, and the structural stability of that, and the benefits to the environment.
I suspect that the Capitol was plaster, and that's the Last American Sealant that you're peeling back there, Gibb, that is why it's sort of rubbery.
Correct.
Is that it's on the Last American sort of thing. If you pull it back, you see the original plaster face of it, and it's just extraordinarily thick, and that's what's helped to preserve it, because the plaster will, exposed to the weather, will start to...
Sure will.
Dissolve. They still make those. There's a group out of Chicago, Chicago Decorative Arts or something, and they still make those, and you can get capitals replaced. I understand the desire to go back with something that has less maintenance, and so you don't have to worry about rot and that kind of thing. It's just we're in this dilemma of, as a preservation organization, to try to maintain as much of the original material as possible, and that's where we get into this dilemma. What do we allow? And as we get craftier and smarter and more chemists get involved, we get more synthetic materials that are not the real stuff that we built with originally 100-plus years ago. It becomes a dilemma of what do we allow in and start, we open the door for other people to come in, that same door, saying, "I want the same thing," and that's where we pretty much held fast for a very long time, and it's just a real dilemma, at least for me.
One of the differences between this house and the other house that we just talked about earlier is that the Thornberry House is only 20 years old and is not contributing to the Historic District, and that is, it does not contribute to the historic nature of the district. It will in 30 years. It'll be 50 years old, and then will be considered to be historic by the National Historic Preservation Act. And so I voted to approve the earlier item because it is not a contributing structure. However, our guidelines do say that original building materials, including wood, brick, stone, terracotta, and stucco, original building and roofing materials should be retained. If replacement is necessary, it should be with original materials or close visual approximations of the original. And this will probably be a close approximation of the original, but when we come to reevaluate the Historic District, the historic architects will look at all of these buildings again, and if there have been alterations that have changed the historic nature of the building, they then may become non-contributing. That is, buildings with vinyl windows, buildings with some synthetic materials may no longer be contributing structures to the Historic District. And so that echoes what Jim is saying. You know, our dilemma is, you know, if we approve these alterations using materials that did not exist at the time that the structures were built, and we come to reevaluate the Historic District, as I think we are planning to do, we may find ourselves without a Historic District, because there have been so many changes made using synthetic materials that were not historic materials. I don't know how, if that's really the case, but it certainly, in some cases, where we have approved inadvertently materials that are not historic, it may have changed the character of the structure in such a way that it can no longer be part of the contributing features of that Historic District. And so that's what we're considering.
Yeah.
Did you by chance consider the original material, if there is such a thing available anymore?
We have. It would have to be custom-made like this, but it is possible.
Did you get a price?
I did. It's almost double the cost.
Yeah.
And it's not as strong or durable or environmentally friendly as the current, that's the...
Well, we don't know how long this modern material is going to last, because it hasn't been around that long. But we do know that the original material lasted 120 years, correct?
Correct, and it's having to be replaced, yeah.
As almost everything will be at some point.
Nothing's guaranteed to last forever.
Right.
Nothing. But from a curb, you know, looking at it from a curb, it'll be an identical match, unless you walked up there and touched it, I guess, and felt it.
Well, I think another thing to consider here, too, is the statement that this will be an exact visual approximation of the original. So as you're driving down Main Street, you're not going to see anything different than you see now, just that the material's different.
And it'll be like a 3D printer? You can make anything in a 3D printer. It's the same process that's used to make these. So it's actually better than what a human can do to carve these, to make them look. In fact, you know, there'll be imperfections in trying to reduplicate this in wood as the composite material. It's computer-generated. It's spot-on.
I did understand you to say, though, that you were going to replace the three, depending on what happens, you'd either... depending on what happens, you'd either replace them all with the new material, or you would repair and replace the three that were highly in need, and the others would be repaired and repainted.
Yes, ma'am. Because of the cost of the wood, because of the labor involved, and how, what they got to do for that process, if we go the wood route, we would only replace the three that have to be replaced because of cost. If we get approved for the composite material, we would replace all of them, so it would all be an exact duplicate.
If you replace them with wood, what materials would you use?
With wood?
Yeah.
I would have to get that from Sledgecraft. I did not ask that. I would hope that it would be pressure-treated exterior wood, which I would request that.
Pressure-treated will not allow a paint surface on it for six months.
The exterior would not be that. It would be similar to what's there, is how they would make that. It would have to be hand-done.
Sort of be elastomeric sealant?
Yeah.
Usually, the cores of them, the shafts, the wooden ones, have a tar-like material, an asphaltic material to keep it dry and that kind of thing. Will these columns, either way you do it, will they be vented?
They will be hollow, so they will be, there will be a small vent at the top that you will not see. And the woods one, wood ones will probably be a bigger diameter vent, just because of the way they have to make them. But I'll, I'll know more details than that once we meet with the manufacturer, depending on what route we go. I can, I can certainly get those answers, and we can meet back up on that.
Any further questions or comments or discussion by the commission?
I would just note that generally speaking, for historic structures, for structures that are on the National Register of Historic Places, that repair is preferable to replacement.
Correct, and that would be the case for the remaining columns, but for the three that are virtually un-reparable, those would have to either get replaced with the wood or the composite. And those other items would have to have some attention done to them, no matter what direction we go here.
Right.
Were the three that were damaged near each other, or were they scattered?
Yes, they were all in the same area. If you look at the photo, it's that corner where the porch meets, right there. One of them is missing near the gutter, and then those two, the right and left of that.
I think you said it was due to a leak. There was damage in that particular area due to a leak.
And I can't confirm that. You know, roofers say, "Yeah, it's due to this," but, you know, wind blows, rain in there for multiple years, and the base of all those have some small holes where water has gotten in there for, you know, improper insulation or just lack of, lack of maintenance over the years, you know, is what causes that.
That would be the most structural spot of the porch, the, the point that carries the greatest load there.
And the great thing about this new material is, it is stronger than the wood for load-bearing, and it says it in there. It's, it's a much more durable product, and with those concrete bases, I'm pretty confident it'll do the job for decades to come.
This one is very difficult. You, you walk in the very fine line with...
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir. But I hear there may be pie in it. I don't know.
If there's no further discussion, the chair would welcome a motion or other action?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the synthetic material as submitted.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm wondering, you're approving the synthetic material for what?
For the columns.
For how many columns?
For all of them. That was the request, your request was for all the columns, correct?
Yes, that's the hope. If we can go the poly-composite route, the, the hope is to replace all of them. Yes, sir.
I would prefer to see a motion to approve the three columns and perform maintenance on the others. And so, as it comes to a vote, I will vote against replacing all of them.
David, are you willing to modify your...
Well, in my, my concern, when you have two different materials, and, and now we're at the risk of visually, visually seeing repairs been done. So, no, I, I would not agree to change the motion.
So, I think we need to continue with the motion as made. We have a motion and a second to replace all the columns. Is that correct, everybody? David?
Yes.
If, no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No. So, the motion fails. Do we have a second motion? Gibb, do you want to make your motion?
I would move that we permit the use of the synthetic material for the three columns, and that maintenance be performed on the other columns with the hope of extending their life. They have lasted 100-plus years. The difference in appearance, according to what you've said, is that there will be no difference in appearance between the replacements and the existing, and so that argument, I think, fails on its face. So, therefore, I would move to approve the three and repair the others.
Do we have a second? I don't think I can make a motion or a second. Can the chair a second?
If, I didn't hear, is there a second?
We don't have a second, and I know as a chair, I cannot make a motion or a second.
If it, if there's no second, it dies for lack of a second.
Well, this is the first time.
I've been, I've been difficult in the past, though.
Does anybody wish to do another motion? The other motion, I think, would have to be wood columns replacement.
I would like to make the motion that the three columns that need to be repaired go back in wood, and then the remaining columns be repaired as needed.
Do we have a second? We have a motion?
Second.
We have a, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I would like, it, one thing that did come up to me as we reduced, when they do an exact copy of that plaster capital, are they going to strip the elastomeric cover off of it and give us back the dimensions in detail of it when it was plaster?
The response that they gave to me was it would be an exact duplicate match. I'm not sure...
A duplicate of what existing?
Of what's currently there. So, I don't know the process and how they do that, but...
Can they, they, you do computer drawings with wood or a computer...
They do. Sledgecraft does do that.
Okay.
And that's what they do, that they're in the industry to do that.
So, in other words, they would probably have to reduce the dimension slightly in order to make room for the, the...
Correct.
The finish, whatever that might be. Yeah, okay.
And they deal with custom homes and this type of process...
They've done this stuff before.
...all over the tri-state.
Yeah, okay.
They're, they're pretty well-known in the, in the street here.
Are they located here in Murph?
They're located right down the street.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So, we have three, four, and two again. So, the motion carries for new wood columns there that to be replaced.
Thanks, guys.
Donald, do we have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I do not. Thank you.
I do not?
If that's the case, then the chair would welcome a motion to adjourn.
Is that moved?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.